Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded. I almost have this memorized. And broadcast live on the Town of Pennfield's Government Access Channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, online at pennfieldtv.org, and social media platforms, Facebook and YouTube, via Town of Pennfield Television. Following the proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Pennfield TV in your device's App Store and should know that it is absolutely free. Now, if you wish to address the board tonight on any public hearing, there's going to be several opportunities and ways for you to do that. One way will be, obviously, if you're here in person, we'll invite anyone in the audience to come up and speak about an application. Another way is for folks that are watching or listening elsewhere, that they can call that phone number, and I think we actually have someone in line already on that. Or you can file electronic comment or question using the town's website, pennfield.org. And we think it's good when people give us comments because it helps us review the issue more thoroughly, and we certainly appreciate everybody taking the time to learn about our application and to give us input. We also think the town does a good job of informing people of what our agenda's going to be, and so that people are fully informed of their right to come in and speak about applications. And you say, "Well, Dan, how does a town do that?" Well, in many ways. One way is a town sends out postcards to property owners that are within a certain distance of the subject application. In fact, we have an email account, excuse me, an email comment from somebody that received a postcard, and it's the first thing she noted, or one of the first things she noted, is "I'm sending this comment in because I received the postcard." So that works. Other ways, the town posts the agenda on our website, the town posts the agenda on the bulletin board here, but perhaps the most visible way, we've all seen them, is the town makes the applicant put a sign in the yard. And that sign says, "Hey, this property's under review. If you have any questions about what's happening, call the number." So all those things, we do hope, as I said, inform citizens of their right to come in and speak about the application, and, as I said, we do appreciate that. So we'll start tonight with our work session, which will be very brief, just takes care of any tabled matters, review the minutes from the last meeting, and then, I don't think we'll take a recess, we rarely do, but once that work session is done, we'll launch into tonight's applications. We have two new applications on the agenda. And when we do that, we'll ask the applicant to come up to one of these tables and give us their name and address. And then usually what happens is the board member, there's somebody assigned his lead on these applications, that person will walk the applicant through the material. All the applicants have submitted very thorough written applications, board members reviewed those, and if necessary and advisable, gone out to the site. So we just think it's more efficient, and frankly, a lot of people, when they come up, are a little bit nervous about having to give a presentation, and it helps that the board member sort of walks them through that. We think that works well. So that is the way that we'll address it. And having said that, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. So let's go to the first item on the agenda, which I think is a minute from last meeting.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve. And a second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And now, tabled matters. We have one tabled matter, Chick-fil-A. I think a lot of folks are here for that. So that's going to be tabled again at the applicant's request, but I do want everyone to know that the applicant has requested and received a zoning determination, allowing it to proceed as a conditionally permitted use in that particular zoning area. And therefore, again, the application will be tabled at the applicant's request, and they need to submit further information, apparently, and so it'll be taken up at our next meeting. So, given that, I would make a motion to table.
I'll second.
All right. You get that second, Kristy? Okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think that's it. So let's proceed with tonight's, if we're ready to go. First item on the agenda for public hearings.
Christopher and Amanda Price, 9 Renwick Run, Pennfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building that is larger than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code, larger than the principal structure as required by Section 250-2.2 of the code, and taller than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12C of the code at 9 Renwick Run. Properties currently are formally owned by Christopher and Amanda Price and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 110.01-1-56. This is application number 25Z-0005.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Hello, folks.
Hi.
How you doing?
If we can get everybody's name and address just for the record, appreciate that.
My name is Amanda Price, I live at 9 Renwick Run.
Christopher Price, 9 Renwick Run.
My name's Matt Oliveri, and...
Matt's my best friend, he helped me draw this up, and we've done everything together since 7th grade, and so he's here for support.
Okay.
I live in Webster.
That's okay.
I know.
A lot of people think I live in Webster because that's my mailing address. So, okay. Matt?
Thank you. So, I went through your application, and I'm going to be honest, the first thing I thought of was, wow, this is big. And we asked the town to pull some of the previous applications, especially applications in the area, and this is, this is big. So I guess the first question is, why is it so big?
Well, we have several cars, a few trailers, ATVs, UTVs, zero turns, so the storage building would house all of that. I've got a diagram right here that shows everything. And then the proposed wood shop, the tools need to be separated far enough apart so that Matt can come over. We have accessibility throughout that structure, and if you, I could bring these up.
Sure.
And I also have had all my neighbors sign off on this.
Okay.
I showed them this picture and everything, just to see if they were okay with it.
All right. I'll pass.
Was that all of the neighbors in the cul-de-sac?
It is.
Thanks. Legit of a question.
Thank you.
So, the, I guess, I'm looking at the plans, and I understand them, but the question is begged, can you do, accomplish the same thing, but it be smaller?
Unfortunately, for me to be able to get around and be able to do some woodworking with Chris, which I enjoy doing in my free time since being paralyzed, wheelchair accessibility is a tough issue when you start talking about cramming tools and vehicles into a tight space.
Okay.
The storage unit would house everything that's sitting outside right now, which the neighbors have to stare at, and that's why I proposed this, and I talked to everybody. They said they would like to see a structure that's going to match the property with, like, materials, the roofs would match, the pitches of the roof would match. We're going to try to make it as attractive as possible. It's not, it wouldn't be a steel structure, we would actually make it look close to the house, so it would be minimal impact. The only people that drive down Renwick are friends, family, and a mailman.
Sure.
It's a very private...
So, again, I guess, to go back to my last question, though, so I understand the space issue. It looks like there's quite a bit of space between all of these tools that will be in here, but the question is, can you accomplish it by making the footprints smaller? The reason that I'm asking, by the way, is that one of our duties is to grant the least variance, the smallest variance as possible under the circumstances. And while I appreciate everything that you've said and everything in your application, what we're looking at is that this is 116% larger than what is permitted by code. And the other thing that we have to look at is the size of the variance. And I personally don't know of a variance that we've ever given that's this large. And a lot of the variance that we've given for these outbuildings, the bigger ones have been out in east Pennfield, which this is, I know this is in, like, in the four corners, but it's not necessarily east Pennfield. So I'm really pushing back on you to see, listen, I...
That's a lot smaller than what I wanted to do originally. I'm not, like, one...
Listen, my kid asks for, like, 45 cookies, and Amanda had two, so I get the concept.
So the sizing comes from two, is, my son's autistic, so we have a bunch of things stored, would be stored in that storage building for him, so he gets...
Multi-different EV?
Well, that, but he's, he also, four-wheelers, the UTVs, dirt bikes, and we've even got him cutting grass on a zero turn. The wood shop is accessibility for Matt, but it's also for him, so it could be safe for him, because sometimes he's, you have to, you know, Charlie, let me see your eyes. So we're just trying to do things so it'll be safer.
Listen, I do appreciate everything you're saying.
Obviously, it could be done in a smaller footprint.
Right, that's what...
Whether it's accessible and usable for me would really limit...
I mean, I take Matt's van in, and we, you know, put the snow tires on it for him. That's an extra car that is not on our property, and so we just wanted...
I'm going to tell you right now, what, probably at the end of this, what I'm going to do is ask to table it, for you guys to go back and really put pen to paper and figure out a way to make this smaller, so that that...
What we have done is we actually physically laid it out with the string line, started parking everything in place to know what really fits.
Yeah, so...
We've had all of our neighbors come over, too. They've all walked around, they wanted to know, a couple of questions and stuff like that.
We did try and shrink it by 10 feet. We just couldn't get everything in there then.
And I completely appreciate all that. What, I'm struggling with taking that, but also knowing, this is, this is a variance that, you could sell the house tomorrow, we could sell the house 10 years from now, and this variance still will exist. It goes with the land.
Right.
So somebody could come and buy it and put up, and say, you never built it, say, you sell it tomorrow and you never build it, but we granted the variance. Somebody could come and put up the same building for completely different purposes. And also, then, now, then we grant it, and tomorrow, somebody a block from you makes an application for the same size building for different reasons, and we push back, and they say, "Well, you just granted it over at 9 Renwick."
But we're very private over there, there's five houses to deal with, and it's, if you go to anywhere else, there's not a lot of areas in Webster, Pennfield, any of the local areas, that have a private tract that is shielded by woods on all sides.
Three and a half acres for each home, too, so not only do they have three and a half acres, but...
I don't think there's that anywhere else in Pennfield.
Our ex-neighbour has three and a half acres.
Like Tomlinson...
As you can see, it's all kind of spread out.
So the problem with that is that the code takes the acres into account. So the amount, the size of the building that you're permitted is based upon the acreage of your lot. So, while I understand that, you're not different than anybody else in Pennfield, because everybody is tied to the size of their lot.
What is more of a concern for the variance, the overall footprint or the height?
Well, I'm, right now, as it stands, I can only speak for me, I can't speak for the rest of the board. I'm not overly concerned with the variance for the height. If you try and take 1,481 square, uh...
Yeah, 1,481.
A variance of, they're looking, a variance of 1,719 from the, no. So if you try and take 1,719 square feet and compress it so that it built up, I probably, so that it's now 10 feet taller, then I probably will have a problem with that as well. My issue is the size of the variance, and perhaps, there's five of us up here, perhaps the other five don't have that issue, and...
No, to interrupt you, I just, there's, given the information that we have about other variances that we've granted, which is something very pertinent to this board, because the board wants to be, and I think traditionally, historically, has done a good job of being consistent. So when I asked Andy to pull this information, I'm, I'm sorry, it's, you know, there's, and I'm glad to give you a copy of this, but it, the, there's one, one variance that we granted on Salt Road, which is further east, where the variance was 2,700 square feet. So that's, you know, that's a pretty large variance request there. But the next closest one was 1,600 square feet, 1,300 square feet, and then there are several others that are a lot less. So I know I share Matt's concerns as well. By the way, that's not to question your motive, your motivation, or your intent here, at all, not at all. He suggests he's going to make a motion to table, I think that's probably a good idea. Something that I would ask you to consider, in addition to, can we shrink it generally, is also to add to that by asking yourself whether there's, every intended use of that building is, do you need it? Do you need the building to, for instance, I have no clue, okay, but it's obvious you like the woodworking. Good for you. Is there anywhere else you can do that woodworking and therefore reduce the space that you've allocated to that? I don't know. But that, I suggest that just as a thought process that we'll be asking you to go through for the next, for the next month. And by the way, if you come back next month and say, "We've done everything that the board asked us to do, and we're sticking to our original position," that, there's no problem with that. We'll consider it fairly, openly, and we'll, we'll take a vote on it, on its merits. But the dialogue in which we're engaging right now, frankly, is something that we often do. My guess is, we probably did it on every single one of these applications here, and many of the folks did, given time, because this is probably coming as a little bit of a surprise to you, so that's one of the reasons...
Not really.
Well, if you want to be fair and give you an opportunity to really not just kind of shoot from the hip here, and instead really give this some thought, and honestly, if you come back and say, "We, we just can't do it. This is what we want, our neighbors are all fine with it, so please grant us that," then we'll consider that. But that's another thing that I thought, because as opposed to cramming all the proposed uses, and can you eliminate some uses and therefore reduce it that way as well, it's another way of thinking at it.
And I say, one thing that I looked at is, when you look at Renwick itself, this is almost twice as large as any structure that your neighbors have. So in one Renwick, I think it's 1,680 for the square feet, and you're almost double that, so in terms of the scale, when you look at what's in character with that street and what's that neighborhood, that's kind of, you know, that's big already.
I think my neighbor's house is 5,000 or 6,000 square feet.
No, no, for the accessory structure.
Accessory structure?
Yeah, 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 so, you know, the house is one size, you know, and then it's, the accessory structure goes with that, which is basically 1% of your lot's square footage, and that's how the code works, based up on that. You know, it's, that's kind of the way I looked at it, is I said, "Okay, 1,680 is the biggest one you have on the street right now, 1,312 is the next one at number 12." You know, that's kind of in character with the size of that neighborhood, and you look around, and you, you know, you look at other areas in that, they're all about that size, but not necessarily larger. You know, I think one of these needed a variance for where it sat on the lot, but not necessarily for the size of it. So, you know, those, so these worked, I think, for those lot sizes already. It's just, you know, it's, sometimes some structures just aren't made to fit in certain areas of, you know, the town.
One of the things that I understand, and if you guys could correct us, is if we were to convert...
The garage...
The garage.
To living space, then the structure would be within the size that we could build, because it would be less than square footage of our house.
Is that correct?
That's going to be Andy's question.
So if we convert the garage, and at 600 square feet, we would be about 3,100 square feet, to almost 3,200 square feet, then we could build a garage with the same square footage or less?
So, yeah.
On the property separate?
There, unlike an accessory storage building, a garage does not have a, it's not limited, specifically limited as to how big it can be in relation to the lot size. So, yeah, if, the only real limitation, obviously you have to comply with setbacks, the garage can't be larger in area than the house.
And it would be about the same size as what we're proposing right now.
Right. That, it would be one way to eliminate one of the variances.
I'm just, I'm trying to let my wife park in the garage.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, that's what happens at my house, by the way, my car's in the driveway all year round.
Yeah.
Mine is, too. Which is okay.
Are you guys going to have utilities to the, to the structure as applied right now?
Yes.
Electricity?
Yes.
And gas.
Water?
Yes.
Okay, so all of them? Gas, water, electricity? Okay. And you're not going to be using it for commercial purposes, correct?
No.
All right.
Personal.
Okay. And lighting?
Yes.
Outside?
Minimal lights. One neighbor was just asked if there would be, they didn't want the nighttime sky interrupted, so I told them, three lights above the garage doors, LEDs on a dimmer, and then just off the man door, security lighting only.
Okay.
Anybody, any other questions from the board?
Is there anything else that we should note or mark on a drawing for the next meeting?
Well, so, something that I would suggest, and I think that we're going to do it ourselves, but it probably would behoove you as well, is to take a look at these ones that we've granted, and, you know, say, "Well, that's similar to the, to ours. So you granted one before for that size, you should grant ours for similar reasons." Because honestly, you know, I'm not a young man anymore, so my memory's not as good as it used to be. Some of these are several years old.
The one that was granted for 2,700 square feet, what was the lot size on that? Do you know?
I don't know if it said.
I don't think it said, but that's, that's the sort of homework that I'm suggesting, that we do and you do, and come in and make a comparison, and, you know, you guys may be able to come in and say, "You've done this before. Concerns that you've had, you must have had previously, and yet..." Now, you know, it could be apples to oranges, I don't know, because I have some numbers here, but that's about it. But we can give you, we can give you this or this similar information, whatever.
That'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay, you'll have it.
All right, so with that, I'm going to make a motion to table. Second.
Second.
I just want to make sure that there's no...
Oh, that's right.
That's okay. I don't see any comments electronically or phone, whoever was on the phone, it looks like hung up, must have been a Chick-fil-A. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, great.
Now I'll make a motion to table. And now I'll second.
And now I'll second. All right, motion to table for the reasons discussed. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
We thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Do you need to keep those, or do we need copies of those letters saying that they're okay with the structure being built from our neighbors?
I don't have copies, is what you're saying.
Those are all originals?
Well, those originals, probably hold on to them first, and then get a copy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those back.
Do you want them back?
I think...
I mean, I can, I can keep them and make copies.
Okay.
Do you want, do you need the originals?
No.
Or are you...
Take a picture of them, you got your cellphone, take a picture of them if you want.
Just use Genius Scan.
We can make a copy of those now.
Genius Scan.
Copy them right now, if you want.
That way we can put them in the file.
Thank you.
Next application, please, if we're ready, or you want to wait?
Andy.
You're getting really good at taking no, is that...
But that's a lower hourly rate, isn't it, paralegal?
It probably is.
Or does it get both rates?
Yeah.
Miniature.
Yeah, we have a standard-sized one, and he looked like that at one point for about two months.
She's eight months old.
Wow.
She's still learning.
Yeah, pretty dog.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, Amber, good night.
You, too.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, you're welcome.
We ready for the next one?
We are, yes.
Joseph Schaefer, on behalf of Mank LLC, requests approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-13.12 of the code to allow the operation of a cannabis retail dispensary at 1,900 Empire Boulevard. The properties currently are formally owned by DeMarco Baytown Associates LLC and is zoned general business, SBL number 093.02-1-23.11. This is application number 25Z-0006.
Good evening. Again, if we could have your names and addresses, please.
Joe Schaefer, S.C.H.A.F.E.R., Schaefer Law, P.L.L.C., 86 Dana Road, Buffalo, New York, 14216.
My name's Mitchell Terrence, 277 Gates Grease Town Line Road, Rochester, New York.
Okay, thank you. So you're here tonight requesting permission to operate an adult-use retail dispensary site in Baytown Plaza. And this board commonly gets applications for conditional use permits in Baytown Plaza, so we're very familiar with the layout and the ingress, egress, all that sort of thing. So, and I've read your letter, very thorough letter here, but what I would ask you to do is go through the conditions necessary for this particular use. I know the town has set up specific issues for this type of use. I'm not saying I don't care about the regular conditional use, the standard conditional use conditions, but again, we're all familiar with the Plaza, so we know about the Plaza. use conditions, but again, we're all familiar with the plaza, so we know about the parking, ingress eating, lighting, all that stuff. I think the bigger concern is the requirements for this particular use and what you're gonna do to make sure that there's security, there's not prohibited use, that sort of thing. So if you don't mind running through that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. And those are, again, thanks for reading the letter. A lot of times, I send five-page letters, and they're not read. And I get to, so I have a, you know, I have a presentation prepared. I'm not gonna go line by line. If you'd like me to put that on the record, I'm happy to, but I am gonna have to grab my computer. That said, I can just knock through the cannabis-specific requirements. The first one being minimum distance. As I, as I read the code, and, you know, I'll defer to the experts here, but I did my best, the minimum distance requirements set forth are not within 500 feet of a residential, this is the first requirement, excuse me. So minimum distance, not within 500 feet of a residential district, not within 1,000 feet of a school, place of worship, public park, you know, public youth facility, et cetera, and then not within 1,500 square feet of another adult use retail dispensary. Our review of Google Maps, the zoning districts, et cetera, shows that we're in compliance with all those. I'm not sure if there are any questions as it relates to that, or any objections as it relates to that.
Actually, the only one that I had, it just, it came to my mind, Baytown does like that kids movie night. Do those kind of things fall within that or not?
Are you aware of what that is?
They like, you know, they've had the outdoor, like, you know, they bring out the big screens at night, and they do all that kind of stuff. And that's, you know, like a kid movie night type thing they do out there. And I didn't know if that, that came to mind when I saw those things. I'm like, I wonder if that even falls, I don't know if that falls under it. So I leave it more to, you know, our legal and town officials to say yes, that's, you know, or staff to say that does fall under that or not. But that's one thing that came to my mind.
I think it's, it's a fair question. I can't speak to the town's code. I can tell you that, you know, the way this is regulated at the state level, it's, you know, cannabis dispensaries, any retail outlet, whether it's a dispensary, onsite consumption lounge, can't be within 200 feet of a church or place of worship, 500 feet of a school or public youth facility. And those are really measured on permanent structures. So if you're familiar with the, the lamp map, which is the SLA's version, the, how basically bars and restaurants can determine where to locate their spaces, it identifies the churches. It's, my understanding and my interpretation would be while there may be a child-focused activity every now and again, we're really focused on permanent structures. So.
Yeah.
Again, but I can't speak to the way that the town would interpret its code.
Yeah, 'cause I guess in theory, that'd be at the same address that you're at, 1,900.
Which, which suite? Yeah, no.
Yeah, yes. So that's why, you know, that's more what I was just curious if anyone had an opinion on that. I didn't know if that was just, that just came, came to my mind when I was reading the letter.
In our, in fact, I mean, I know this is actually the second one, so you may, maybe this is a perfect segue. Thanks a lot for that. Hours of operation are Monday to Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and then Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So depending on when that's done, if this is something that the town would, or the board, or the town, or, you know, Baytown would prefer that we close prior to that, I'm sure there's some flexibility there. You know, we have support of the landlord here. In fact, Nick DeMarco from DeMarco is here, and to the extent you have questions for the landlord directly. But we also included the, the letter of support that we had from the property owner. So I certainly understand that. At the same time, you know, it's my understanding that there was a prior CBD shop that was a few suites down, and they, they were basically shut down as an illicit operation by the state for selling, you know, effectively selling, illicit cannabis is the sale of untaxed, unregulated cannabis products. We're, we're a state licensed dispensary, right? So it's not as if that didn't previously exist. I believe it was called Red Eye. You know, just, if that alleviates any concerns, we're certainly, I can't speak to the last, to those folks, but we're required to be a better actor. I had already hit, so, and then the...
Do you mind if I interrupt you? Because I have a question, not for you, but a question for Andy on the, the distance requirements. You know, I'm looking at the checklist, and it lists all the ones council's gone through, and then there's, there's another one, a catch-all. Other similar uses as listed above is determined by a code enforcement officer. Do we have any that we know that we're concerned about here?
We, we did a review of the area, and we didn't find anything that fell, that we thought fell into that category.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind me moving on to, back to hours of operation.
Go right ahead.
Those hours of operation are taken directly from the code. So you'll see that in our application, we submitted different hours of operation to the state. Those hours of operation were submitted to us ultimately moving to this property, which I'll explain in my number eight. So I promise I'll keep this moving. But those hours of operation that we will be ultimately operating under are as set forth and permitted in, in the code.
Okay.
Chair, your, your question as it relates to security is, in fact, one of my favorites, not because I'm a security practitioner, but because the requirements that the state sets forth for these businesses are enormous. This is, as we know, cannabis is a Schedule One substance under the Controlled Substances Act. It is federally illegal. That said, New York State legalized it in March of 2021. And as a result, this is one of that most heavily regulated, compliance-focused businesses. These guys have had to deal with me, unfortunately, for the past two years. I don't work with clients that will not be compliant. And one of the first things that we spoke about were the security requirements that an adult use retail dispensary has to abide by. We have to submit a safety and security plan to the state, and we're happy to provide that. It's post-licensure, pre-opening. Sorry, I think.
It's okay.
Hoping you guys can hear me okay.
Yep.
So that, we got some great news today, which I'll talk about a little bit later, but ultimately, we will be, so the plans that we have in place right now is full security camera coverage of the entire property, both the floor where folks will be, you know, purchasing hopefully products, as well as all, like, any sort of area where we're storing products, employee break rooms. As Mitch said to me yesterday on the phone in preparation for this, we're gonna have more cameras than a bank. And in addition, we're hiring an outside security service to come in and watch the door. Whether or not these folks are armed, I can't speak to that, but my assumption is they will be due to the security threat that dispensaries are focusing, not just, are seeing, not just in our state, but across the country. So, security service, I believe the monitoring is required to be 24 hours a day. There's IDs that will be checked at the door. So if you're under 21, you can't walk in there with a McLovin fake ID. It doesn't work that way. You need to have a proper government ID, no sales to individuals under 21. If we have any security breaches, I, I recognize that the town will be concerned about that. We risk more than that. We risk losing our license.
Can I ask you about the entry to the place? If I'm a, oh, 22-year-old kid, and I have a buddy with me that's 18, can the 18-year-old get in?
No.
Okay.
No.
I had a question about this.
Thank you.
Just learning a lot here. Is this security, are you ever audited by the state? Do you have to reapply? How often do you have to reapply? How often is it, are you checked? Is it, what does that process look like?
It's a great question. So the license initial term from when we pay for it is two years. So spoiler alert, I sent you, I sent Andy an email yesterday. We got some really nice news today at 1:00. We were awarded our permanent license. I can explain what the difference between a conditional and a permanent license is later. But to answer your question, it's a two-year license. We're subject, we, in order for us to even open, we have to go through a virtual walkthrough with the Office of Cannabis Management to make sure that all of our security systems are ready to go, that we have the adequate amount of terabytes to store the video footage that we have to keep for a certain number of weeks or months. We're subject to a drop-in audit any day. They could, OCM could walk in, in the same way that the Health Department or the SLA could walk into a bar and restaurant to ensure that they're not selling to underage folks or doing anything wrong, or that they're, you know, you're up to code. We're, we're subject to the same issues. So it's, it's consistent, I mean, scheduled and unscheduled audits. I mean, generally, we're seeing audits once a year, just because there aren't enough humans to come around once every two months. And look, these are small businesses, first-time businesses. There haven't been many dispensaries in the state. Sure, there, there have been dispensaries for the past two years now, but this is the first time, and I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, but the Finger Lakes region was really enjoined, subject, for the, there was a lawsuit that enjoined the opening of dispensaries in the Finger Lakes region for about a year and a half to two years. So now that we're finally getting off the ground in the Rochester area, you know, these are the first dispensaries here. And what I've seen is compliance officers, where they, they used to be lenient, hey, this is your first time, we get it. That leniency's going away, as there's more of a critical mass of dispensaries opening up. So if that covers the, adequately covers the security questions, I'm also happy to speak to anything else.
Have you seen the email comment?
I have not.
Okay, let me read it, and then I'll, then I'll hand it to you, so you can look at it. And you heard me saying before, and it's true, this is from a neighbor of mine about three houses down from me, 'cause I live right behind Baytown. Oh, there you go.
Sorry, thanks.
So just to read it into the record, it's from Greta Schuler. And she says, "My negative opinion about allowing a retail marijuana business in Baytown Plaza is strong enough that when I got the postcard notifying of the March 20 meeting to review the request, I immediately called the town and left a message against it. The town called me back and left a voicemail recommending that I send a written message, which I'm doing, now emphasizing my negative response. I live directly behind Burlington and Planet Fitness. My family has lived at 111 Guy Grace since November 1997, a long time. I do not want more businesses that encourage drug use near my residence. People have used our yard as a cut-through to get to the plaza. Sometimes there is music with people hanging out behind the building, which affects my comfort in my backyard. A family friend was in the yard exercising our dog and reported the smell of weed," and she says that's his word, "coming from behind our berm. While marijuana is legal, I prefer not to have it invade my personal space, my property. My daughter now describes the Baytown Walmart vibe as quote-unquote sketchy. I hope the plaza would find more suitable tenants." And then sincerely, and she, she signs her name. As sort of parenthetically, I've, I've lived in that neighborhood since 94, so I've known Greta that long. Very reasonable person, with frankly, something that I think most people would share concerns. So it's good to hear you say about all the security. It's good that New York State is gonna be doing the audits. But I guess I would like to hear a little bit more about what you would do if somebody was, you know, violating one of your rules, one of the state's rules, one of the town's rules. Buy something, goes, takes two steps outside and lights it up, or if it's a gummy or whatever, eats it. And you see that, and you know that. What do you, what do you plan to do about that?
So just to, you guys are doing a great job segueing for me, because, because the fourth, number four on my list is no onsite consumption. So it's our understanding, in my review of the, you know, the decisions made by the town, is that the town adopted in for retail dispensaries. So while I certainly, I've seen a lot of, and with, with all due respect to Ms. Schuler, I see a lot of this, and I understand, there is certainly a stigma still associated with cannabis, cannabis and cannabis use. It is these businesses' obligation to, to get on the other side of the stigma, to, to operate the tip-top business in the state to ensure that these are the highest-class operations. Because the state of New York legalized adult use cannabis, and the town of Penfield chose to have it within its borders. So I would direct Ms. Schuler to say, hey, look, we're just following what we're allowed to do. The town of Penfield decided that we could be here. We're in the correct zoning district, as we talked about before. We're where we're allowed to be.
Right.
I understand, Mr. Chair, that, you know, there is a concern about folks smoking outside. First of all, we know that there's no onsite consumption allowed in Penfield at all. So if anybody's smoking on the sidewalk outside our security detail, or one of our employees is going to tell that person to leave. If that person doesn't have a ride, I'm sure in the same way that a bar would call a cab for you, we will call a cab for that person. It's not permitted. If OCM shows up, to your question, and they see people outside hanging out, smoking, having a great time, maybe they're not having a great time, who knows? But having a time, some sort of time, we're gonna, we're gonna get cited. We're gonna be under investigation. Why is that allowed? The OCM doesn't allow that. If they're across the way, there's only so much we can do to police that. Where someone chooses to consume, and, and just to, as a reminder, you're allowed to consume cannabis, smoke a joint, eat an edible, wherever you're allowed to smoke a cigarette. So we understand that, yes, the odor can be, you know, potent for some folks, but if someone's smoking a cigarette, it's the same rules that apply to those people.
Yeah.
We recognize that that's not what you're asking, Mr. Chair. I, I, I understand. Our folks will be on this like a hawk, because they wanna make sure that not just, we're not just here to make money, we're here to be a great partner. And I think that our hope is that folks like Ms. Schuler can actually accept us as, as, you know, a friendly neighbor that won't add to any of the issues at her property.
Yeah, I, I think it's, and you've addressed this, but I do, I think it's, first of all, it's a new thing. We haven't had an application like this. So it's a first time for us as well. So I think it's just a little bit of a, you guys are experienced here, obviously well-versed in the law about it. And everything you've said about the law and legalization is accurate. So what, what I, I wanna stress tonight is a lot of the questions we're asking is because we want you to understand how important it is to this board and this town that you stay on top of things. And I had no reason to believe you won't. But there have been times in the past with different businesses that we've granted conditional use permits, and then the calls come. Not all legitimate, but several legitimate. And we've had people come back in here. And sometimes we've had serious, or sincere explanations for the complaint and determined it's not really founded. But other times, they have been founded. And we have, and we will continue to hold people's feet to the fire when it comes to compliance. So you got, you know, I don't know that we're gonna do auditing like New York State, but we will be watching to make sure, that's a plaza, and this board has been involved, Nick will tell you, doing a lot of work with DeMarco to keep that plaza up and going, and going well. And it is, I, I don't know how many years it took for the Super Walmart application to go through with the town board, planning board, this board. But that's up and running and, and successful. But it took a long time. And it's not every month, but probably three, four times a year, we get an application for another tenant to come in. And I don't, I don't know that we've ever denied one, but I, I point all this out because we do want the plaza to be a nice place to go and shop by yourself or with your family, including your kids. And, you know, people driving in that area to go shopping to one of the other nearby businesses, seeing a group of people hang out in front of a dispensary are gonna start legitimately doubting. So that's why, I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm just saying, I, I don't wanna hear about it happening, I guess is the point. So, again, I'm lecturing a little bit, but I sort of feel compelled to, to be honest with you. And I would have done it whether or not Greta sent that in, to be honest with you, because I do live right behind there. But also, I'd be doing the same thing even if I lived in East Penfield or somewhere else. Because it's a legitimate concern that the town is. But you're totally right, the town opted in. So far, you've checked every box, and I'm, I'm sure by the end of your presentation, you will have checked all of them, to be honest. So go ahead and keep going.
Mr. Chair, I think it's a fair point, and I guess, maybe it's 'cause I haven't unlearned the lessons I learned from law school, but the best thing I can do is just equate a dispensary for the members of the board, and to the extent there's anyone behind me other than Nick DeMarco. This is, this is a liquor store or a beer store. In Buffalo, we have consumers. I don't know what the prevailing beer store is in, in Monroe County. But no one's sitting outside of consumers drinking their six-pack. And I grew up in Orchard Park next, like, very near to the Bill Stadium, the closest consumers to the Bill Stadium, even on game day. I mean, there's better places to go, certainly, but it's the same concept here. You're not going outside the liquor, I mean, most people aren't going outside the liquor store and taking three swigs of their Jack Daniels and getting in their car. The other thing that I think that it might be helpful, and if this puts the board and the town at ease, is to have a meeting between, you know, obviously, we need to get through this tonight and see how everything goes, but have a meeting with, with the local police to make sure that they understand what's going on and everything, and, and the controls that we're gonna get, that we're gonna put in place. So that's, I've seen that work for, for other clients in the past, and I recommend that tonight.
Oh, great. Well, well, if there's an approval motion, that'll probably be a condition, then.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
Okay.
There you go. Fire as well, just, it's, it's, I think that would be worthwhile. So there's your second condition. Sorry, Mitch. The fifth condition is no drive-through. There's... There's, I think the, the picture on the screen in front of me is pretty clear that it, I don't even know if it's physically possible to put a drive-through there, so there will not be a drive-through. We see a lot of these at old banks, so that's where I understand drive-through. This is, we're not gonna have a drive-through. We may have pickup, you can walk inside and it'll be ready for you, but that's, I understand that's not drive-through. My number six is, and I'm trying to read my chicken scratch here, it says no outside storage of products. Per our safety and security plan, everything's gonna be inside behind multiple locked doors. There's going to be in all likelihood, I assume, a window that, you know, there's gonna be no product on the floor, just to be clear. I don't even think we're allowed to have product on the floor pursuant to the cannabis regulations. Everything's gonna be, you know, it's, it's, the product packaging may be on the floor, but there's no actual product that can be smashed and grabbed or anything like that. So all product storage will be well behind the counter and also very much indoors, because if you guys are familiar at all with the products, these are very temperature dependent products. So if these are in the wrong storage, they're gonna spoil real quick. You're not, I'm not putting my beer outside in the sun in the same way, I'm not putting my cannabis outside in the sun. Odor control plan, I went through it in the application, but we're installing specific HVAC to make sure, and we're required to do that pursuant to the state, we can't just be blasting cannabis smells. But at the same time, we're not a, we're not a grower, we're not a processor, we don't manufacture any of this. Most of these pack, most of these products, they're packaged in glass jars or metal jars, pouches, et cetera. So the, the odor, if any, is incredibly minimal. The only time you'll see the odor is obviously when, you know, for instance, if someone's smoking something and as we've went through, ad nauseam at this point, no one will be smoking anything on our premises.
Semi-related to storage, not really though, and this is a, maybe this is totally ignorant question, delivery of the product, how does that work? Where would the, is it a delivery truck? What happens, because you're not growing, you're not producing on property, so how do you get your product and what's the safety measures with that?
Meaning delivery from a manufacturer to our, to our location, yeah. I, I think that, I, admittedly, I can't see around the other side of the building where, maybe, I don't know if Andy, if you can get me over there, I'm not sure if there's a delivery door over there or not, but, I mean, these are incre, so there's transfer manifests that are required for, oh, speaking of, there's a liquor store right next door.
Oh, I think you knew that.
[laughing]
But that's okay.
I forgot. So if that's, is that our door? Okay. So my assumption is that, so deliveries are gonna be going in the bag, so it doesn't go, so we're not, like walking cases of these things throughout the store floor. That's gonna be beyond padlocked. It's not gonna, you know, disrupt consumer traffic. These are very discreet deliveries, as I'm sure you can imagine. The state isn't even allowing a lot of these delivery trucks to be labeled because of security issues. So, I mean, we're gonna have a protocol and we're gonna have to show that protocol to the state once we, you know, prior to us getting up and running. And if the board would like that information, we're happy to provide it.
Is delivery usually during retail hours, or would it be outside of the hours of operation?
I, I really appreciate the fact that you think the cannabis folks run on a schedule.
I don't know.
Generally speaking, there will be a scheduled hour. I mean, I've given presentations to cannabis crowds at 9:15 in the morning and it was an empty ag hall in Syracuse, so I'd say they're probably more afternoon focused, but generally during hours of operation, they'll be scheduled when the adequate personnel are there. This is a pretty coordinated effort between dispensary and distributor due to the security issues. So I would say hours of operation, but with the caveat that there's more than adequate personnel there to handle the, the delivery. My, this is, so I kind of, I guess I was trying to save this one, but no operations until all state approvals have been received. I guess this is where I can give you guys the lecture on what a provisional license actually is, why it matters and why that doesn't matter anymore. So a provisional license, when we applied, Mitch walked into my office with his business partner about two and a half years ago. We had a location on Ridge Road that ultimately fell through. That's what we applied for in November of 2023. There's this concept that the state goes through called proximity protection, which means that cannabis dispensaries cannot be within a certain amount of feet of one another. So we had applied for our dispensary at 714 West Ridge Road in Rochester, and someone else had a location that was within 1,000 feet of our proposed location. However, due to the serious need for adult use cannabis dispensaries in the state of New York because the rollout was bad, this is a change that Governor Hochul made post-licensure in about March of 2024. So seven months after we submitted our application, she said, "Everybody who applied with proof of control over a location in November of 2023 that has fulfilled all of the necessary criteria for, to receive an application other than having their real estate controlled is eligible to receive a license." So we couldn't operate in our initial space. We located this new space, 1900 Baytown Plaza, or 1900 Empire Boulevard, Suite 190. We submitted that location to the state after we received a provisional licensure. So the state said, "You guys did everything you need to get a license, except you can't operate at 714 West Ridge Road. Here's a conditional license, you've got 12 months to go find a spot that will be your permanent home." We found 1900, 1900 Empire Boulevard, Suite 190. We submitted it to the state, they approved it about a month and a half ago. After we got that locked in, the state said, "Well, there's no more deficiencies in your application like we knew. They put us on the agenda for today. Our conditional license turned into a permanent license. A permanent license is a license tied to a specific retail location. So we can only operate at 1900 Empire Boulevard, Suite 190. If the board chooses not to allow us to do so, we're gonna have to go find a new location and we're gonna have to do it quickly." That said, we think we've satisfied everything, so if the condition is that no operations until all state approvals have been received, that was the last state approval that we needed. We, we have operational approvals, we have to do that virtual walkthrough, but Mitch can pay for his license the second he gets the email that says, "Hey, you got a license" at the Cannabis Control Board meeting today. And so he'll pay that license fee, we can send that license certificate over. If you'd like to make a condition saying that no operations until we see the license certificate, that's understanding, or that's understandable, but that, that criteria is, is taken care of.
Our, I don't know if the state can even do it, but if they can have, do you know if they've put any special conditions on the license?
I, I, could you give me a hypothetical example?
Well, maybe they, they, for whatever reason, limited hours of operation, let's say. I mean, I, obviously I don't know, but anything like that. And you haven't, you haven't seen it. All, all that happened today was they voted to say, "Okay," and then you'll actually get the license, the written document sometime in the future.
I haven't seen any license-specific conditions, and generally they defer to the municipality where municipalities can regulate time, place and manner. However, there's a specific list of time, place and manner regulations that, that municipalities can, can do, and those that are not on that list are basically what, everything else you can't do. So that's Section 119 of the Adult Use Cannabis Regulations. To the extent the board would like me to send those to them, I'd, I'd be more than happy to. However, no license-specific conditions. They, what they did is they, they made a motion to, or it was a resolution to approve 50 licenses en masse. So it was called, they weren't, they didn't call our name and say, "Mank LLC," and then they say, "Yeah." You know, I mean, that would've been really cool, but, you know, they approved 50, they don't have that much time. So they approved 50 licenses, cultivators, distributors, manufacturers, brand licensing, micro businesses. We were just one of, of multiple on that list.
Yeah, I saw the attachment, yeah. I got sick of scrolling through it.
We were only on the second page.
If you got sick of scrolling through that, if you actually read the regulations for this type of, yeah. Our, our conditions seem superfluous based on the rules they have to follow just to open one.
Right. Well, actually, that's, that's a pretty good point. It's, it's not if, as if the state just said, "Oh, go ahead and do whatever you want, just be good about it." You know, owners than that.
I don't recommend reading that in the evening, yeah. Read it in the morning, because otherwise you will fall asleep.
Okay.
And I think that, thanks for making that point. It, it's, it's taken us, it's, it's been a long road. Like I said, I mean, I got, I've gotten to know Mitch over the past two years. We applied for this license in November of 2023, right? Like, this has been more than a year since we hit submit and paid the thousand dollar application fee in order to even know if we could do this. We had no idea, we were put in a lottery initially. Our number finally got called. I know these folks personally, they've become my friends, and I think I can say with, with a lot of confidence that they don't intend to goof this up. They take this very, very seriously. And as long as I'm around, to the extent you, you guys take me seriously, I don't, none of my clients, I don't let any of my clients play fast and loose with any of the rules. There were a lot of, there were a lot of attorneys out there who represented sticker shops and illicit operations. I never represented one of them. And we don't, that will never fly with me, so. The last condition, just to, to round it out, was that the application for the conditional use permit includes all state submissions. You have our application. If there's any additional submissions you'd like, but I, I think that we've provided that. So, Mr. Chair, 20 minutes later, and thank you guys for bearing with me, I believe that shows that we've satisfied all nine cannabis-specific conditions.
Yes, thank you. And again, it's our first application of this type, so no problem. You went through it very efficiently, actually. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess I just have one. So looking at Google, I guess this is for Andy. There's a Jack and Jill daycare that's listed as temporary, temporarily closed. Is that close-closed?
It is closed.
Okay.
Yes.
Where was, is that behind the bank?
Yeah, well, it's, it's by that Mexican restaurant that was...
Canadago National Bank.
Right. It's at the back of the lot.
And so this would basically preclude a daycare in the 1,000 feet area.
It, it wouldn't stop a daycare from going in. They, the, the distance requirement is applicable to the cannabis retail dispensary. If a daycare decided they wanted to move in next door...
Yeah, they wouldn't have to vacate.
Right. We're grandfathered into our location so far as I, it hasn't come up yet, it's a really good question though, so. And look, we've tried to comb through, I mean, believe me, Mitch, I think, was walking around Brockport at one point pacing out how close, the closest church was. Like, we've, you want to talk about distance requirements, these were the first guys I did measurements for on this. It's, it's, I mean, I had to look up what as the crow flies meant. Maybe it means like in a straight line, like the closest, like point A to point B. You don't go around the block, it's straight through. And I think that actually knocked us out of, of a potential location and brought us here, so look at us now.
That's all I have.
I don't, any other questions from the board?
No.
I don't see any phone calls, nor do I see any electronic comments. So I'll ask anybody in the audience, care to speak about this? No. Okay. I guess the, the last thing that I want to say before we get into the seeker here is to, just again, if we ask you to come back and address some concerns, you know, we, we hope that you be as cooperative as you have been up to and will be disappointed, let's say, if, if we didn't get that. We, like any business, we want that business to be successful and you're entitled to operate a business like this under the law, so we want you to be successful as well. Okay. Well, we don't have any comments, so we'll move to the consideration. The first thing we'll do is the seeker, and I'll make a motion to declare this a, an unlisted action under seeker and to further issue a negative declaration.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a seeker motion with, and a second with some hesitation, but nonetheless, it was made. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now on the merits, I'll make a motion to approve the application. I think we've had a very thorough written presentation, followed by the verbal presentation tonight. There's no doubt that this sort of use is, is new to the town, but as has been pointed out, the town several years ago, I think, I'm not even sure when it happened, but elected to allow this when New York State legalized it. And it's, it'll, it'll, it's still a debate, it will be a debate whether it should be legal, but, you know, now it is. So I think our job is to make sure that everything on this checklist has been reviewed and is checked, and I'm making a motion to approve because I think the applicant has adequately responded to all these. I don't want to be redundant, but we know the plaza, there's plenty of parking, we, the plaza's going well, it's, it's vibrant, so we don't have any of the ingress egress issues or all the typical standard conditional use requirements have been met. Oh, actually, did anyone ask about music? You guys gonna be playing any music? I'll ask it now.
Inside or outside?
Inside, let's start with inside. No, that's a no?
I mean, maybe some background noise, but nothing like...
Yeah. And how about outside? Good, okay. All right, so as I was saying...
Is there no ambient, like smooth jazz generally in the plaza, or am I...
Quit while you're ahead.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, okay, in any event, that's, again, I, I think they've addressed the concerns and, and we'll, you know, keep an eye out as we will with anything, because this is, oh, what did I forget?
I'm sorry, I just remembered, I was supposed to remind you to ask about trash management.
Oh, thank you, and I'm glad Nick is here to hear this too. Where is, where are you gonna put your trash? Garbage. Do you know, is there a dumpster in that area? Yeah, come on up and address this, I'm glad you're here. Thank you.
Do you want to add those conditions to it?
Yes.
So all tenants are required to have their own dumpster set up, and if you go around the back of the plaza where we're building the new community bank currently, not well-organized right now, but we're building a dumpster enclosure wall to enclose that where the drive-through is gonna be going through. So any dumpsters or, if they don't need a dumpster, just bins will be placed back there in that corner.
Okay, good. And you two are wondering why the heck I asked that question. You've heard me say probably 10 times already that I live right behind the plaza. And the other day at about 4:32 in the morning, I was awoken by the sound of a dumpster slamming on the ground and a lid closing, and then hearing the backup beep of the truck, and I said, "Andy, make sure I ask about that." So I'm glad you're here, Nick. So please, check that out. My understanding is the approval resolution doesn't allow that to 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, so, you know. Happens once in a while, okay, but look, I'm, I'm not a young man and I need my sleep. So I appreciate you being here and I appreciate you looking into that for us. So that's what that was about.
And trash is, for the record, is largely just like packaging casing, so it's largely cardboard, it's not...
I, I won't hear your dumpster.
Yeah, can't be, you're gonna be throwing out a whole lot of product.
No, no.
Don't want to forget the, the things we wanted to put on this specifically, like if...
Right, you're the second person to remind me of that in the last two minutes. The other person on the end just reminded me.
Listen, you just, you said you're not, you know, young and spry anymore, I have to help.
I didn't say anything about spry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to...
Yeah, so I, I would definitely like to see the concession that if there is a movie night with children, that the, the dispensary closes for that period of time.
Okay. All right, well, so I'll take that as in addition to the, to the motion. Now, are you guys aware of, of what that is more than we've said today, or, Nick, are you planning on doing that this summer?
I don't think we've had a children's movie night since before I started working a couple years ago. I remember, I'm very familiar with Howie, who has run some of our events for the marketing, and we haven't, we've just been doing the car shows on Thursdays in recent years. But he, I have heard about the, the movie nights in the past from before I was working, and I don't think they were, they were working too well or something, so they stopped doing them.
I just know, I, I remember you guys came here for, I think, a variance to do that, I think, to hold outdoor events.
Yeah, I remember, yeah, that was, that's reason enough that it was in our mind, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, the variance for outdoor events, yes, that was, might have been a proposed use, and we're definitely okay with what, at the time of having a, a children's movie night, proposing an hour change, I think, or, which would be in the evenings in the summer times, which would be most likely around after 8 o'clock, but we'll, we'll work with the town.
What are your proposed hours again?
I believe it's 9:00 AM to 8:00, yeah. 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday to Saturday, and Sunday 11:00 AM to 5:00 AM.
Right, so that's, you know, these, what they're talking about, you can see the tents in that picture there, I, I think that's where it is, and...
We would just hope that if that condition is imposed and those movie nights did exist, that there would be some... that there would be some flexibility on the town, that if, you know, it's not a three-hour lead time, especially, you know, this is...
Oh, no, if it's happening, you guys in the past have published it at the beginning of the summer.
Yeah, they're pre-scheduled in the springtime. And we also built a, a new turf area on the other side of the plaza, which is, I believe is more than the required distance away from the store as well. So that should, that could also be a potential solution.
Okay. All right. So just to continue with the motion, abide, also a condition abide by all of you, New York State requirements, you've already said that, and the safety plan, submit that, and you'll agree to abide by that and let the town know of any changes to that if and when they occur.
And they're going to meet with the, the, the sheriff.
The sheriff, yeah, the law enforcement in this area is Monroe County Sheriff. So, yeah, meet with the sheriff and let the sheriff answer any questions the sheriff may have about your operation. And I think that's, that's it. So that would be my motion to approve with those conditions.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Good, good job.
What?
Just for clarification for the clerk, after the meeting with the sheriff, are they to report that to the town that that occurred?
Yes, once you've done that, if you don't mind, just letting the town know that the meeting occurred.
Call Andy.
Call Andy, yeah.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
All right, I think that was the last application for tonight. Good work by everybody for a new, new application for us, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before you adjourn, I wanted to get a clarification on the tabled item.
Sure.
Did what you say mean that the Chick-fil-A has been approved with conditions?
No.
Because I'm getting a lot of questions from the public.
You know, I was, I would have entertained any questions, I was kind of surprised that there weren't any. So here's, here's what happened, and you can feel free to quote me or tell people to watch this. Chick-fil-A is, is quite aware of the issue raised by some citizens through their council, that, hey, there's this overlay district rule that imposes, or that actually, I should say, that overlay district prohibits drive-through, takeout restaurants?
Non-sit-down.
Non-sit-down.
Not sit-down restaurants. And, and if that were to be applied, then Chick-fil-A would not be a conditionally permitted use. But there's an exception to that, and that exception is if the proposed use would make the area safer. And in essence, that's what it is. I'm sure the council for the group of citizens would, would be well aware of it. And they, Chick-fil-A then asked the town, I don't, her title escapes me at the moment, but for determination on that issue. And she issued a determination saying that, yes, this proposed use would be safer, therefore, pursuant to the code, you can use the zoning requirements that would allow for the safer use, which would be the underlying zoning, which would allow this to be a conditionally permitted use.
So is that saying that basically the overlay doesn't apply?
Yeah. In essence, that's what it says. In this particular instance, it doesn't apply, so therefore, a non, whatever type of restaurant, I say drive-through, restaurant would be in these circumstances allowed. Now, they still have to come in and get their variance request granted, so that's not done yet. And, you know, that, people can do with that determination, you know, what they want. They have, they have rights on that as well, which I'm sure council's fully aware.
And you stated that that determination about the overlay district was made by a town official?
Yeah, somebody help me with her title.
Carrie Ivers.
Carrie Ivers, okay.
Yeah.
Developmental Services.
There you go. That's her title, yeah. And it's in writing, and is it, is it on the website?
It is on the website, available for anybody to review.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so, and my guess is that's not the last we've heard of that issue either, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and again, I wish, I know there were a lot of people here and I really expected someone to say, what the hell does that mean, or what the heck does that mean? Either one, I would have answered, so. In any event, that's, I thank you for asking that. So, and if anybody has any more questions, I'm calling Andy. All right, so I do think, I do think we're done for the night, so thank you all very much and we'll see you next month. Good work.